We may not be speaking very long. I'll try to briefly now mention the rest, the other six points that we have to cover. First one was salvation. God commanding light to shine out of darkness. It just happened. Then look at what happened on the second day. Genesis, chapter 1. We have verse 6. And God said, "Let there be a firmament in the midst of the waters, and let it divide the waters from the waters." Now God is dividing water from the water. You find our God is a God who is dividing always. You saw even earlier, you know, God divided light from darkness. God wants to show a difference always, you see. So here God is dividing water from the waters, and He made the firmament and divided the waters which were under the firmament from the waters which were above the firmament. And it was so, and God called the firmament heaven. And the evening and the morning were the second day. Second day, that's all God did. God divided the waters from the waters. Waters above the firmament, that is the atmospheric heaven. Atmospheric heaven. Above, and then the water, both water only. I think we know about it, right? Above our heads, what do you find? Tons and tons of water. The clouds actually are water. You went during rain, at rainy time, you can just put a bucket there outside, and it will get filled in no time. But where did the water come? All from above, right? And they all went from the earth only. So water cycle, we learn about how it happens. But it's wonderful. It's water. But part of the water is earthly water. The other part is the heavenly water. You see, separation. That's the second lesson. That's a beautiful lesson. Water only. But God has divided water from the water. So we must realize that as believers, we are heavenly people. And we are not the earthly people. Though we live here, everything about us is heavenly. We have a heavenly Savior. And we are seated in heavenly places also. We have a heavenly perspective of things. It's wonderful. Remember, this is very important for us, that we are not earthbound and earth beings. We were one time, but now we have a heavenly perspective of things. So separation is an important word for Christian life. Salvation after that, separation. So God has called us to lead a separated life. But not an isolated life. We are in the world, but not of the world. We look at things from a heavenly perspective, always. How would heaven see things? How will God see things? That is the way we are being seen. So maintain that separation, dear brothers and sisters, in our life. That we are separated from the sinful behavior patterns of the world, the people of the world. We cannot be doing the same thing. We cannot doing the same thing and believing the same thing. Everything regarding us is heavenly. We have a heavenly calling, don't we? Yes, Hebrews chapter 3 please. Hebrews chapter 3 and verse 1.
Therefore holy brothers, you who share in a heavenly calling, consider Jesus the apothecary and high priest of part of it.
Yes. So you are partakers of a heavenly calling. So remember that. We are not only earthly people. Though we are in the world, we are not of the world. So second word, second day speaks to us of separation. Now God has done everything in the very beginning. In the first chapter, all these things are mentioned. God separating waters from the waters. Now we'll go to the third day, because we had to quickly finish. Third day. Third day is found in verse 11. Of course, from verse 9, it is the third day. And verse 11 particularly. God said, "Let the earth bring forth grass, the herb yielding seed, and the fruit tree yielding fruit after his kind, whose seed is in itself upon the earth; and it was so." Mind the word, "fruit tree." Fruit after his kind. Look at verse 12. And the earth brought forth grass and herb yielding seed after his kind, and the tree yielding fruit, whose seed was in itself after his kind; and God saw that it was good. So much about plant life is mentioned there. This is the death blow to evolutionary theories, ideas. It says, can you see, "after his kind"? Did you notice that? "After his kind." That is the rule. No one can pass the boundary. There are families. When we look at the animal kingdom, there are families of animals. And when you look at the plants, there are families of plants. You cannot cross the boundary and become another, go into another family. You see, it has never happened. There is no evidence that it has ever happened. But still they believe. Only they say, "Oh no, you can't see it. It is happening through a period of 1 billion years." Now look at it now, billion years, that's a long time. We have only 70 years here. So when you say billion years, how to observe that now? No, no, why can't we observe it? No, you can't observe it, because it's billion years. So that's it. So you have to believe the light. So remember, you cannot, God said, "after his kind." You cannot cross the boundary. Families remain within the family. So that is the divine rule. Up to this day, it is the case. But man has violated that, challenged that, and said, "No, no, it can cross the boundary." No, it cannot. And we say, "No, there must be some evidence." So that lack of evidence, what you call it? There's a name in evolutionary theory, in evolutionary explanations. Now ape is there, man is there. There is no intermediary place, not even a piece of any board found anywhere. What do you call that? It's not there, so it's called what? Missing?
Link.
Missing link. See, how there, very, very wisely in there, right? Very cunning. It's missing link. So it's missing. So it's missing, every day it's missing only, never found. But they make you believe, "One day you will find it." That's how they say. "One day you will find it." So wait, wait and see, you will find it. But now, for now, it's missing. Missing link. Ape is there, man is there, no in between, nothing. It's missing. So suddenly, one man will find, come up with some idea. "Oh, I have found the missing link." The headline will say in the newspapers. "Missing link found." Pilled down man, latest things came, you know, he isn't here. It came into our textbooks also. What have they found? The piece of the lower jaw of the bone, something, one, one tooth has been found. Look at this now. It's hilarious when you really study that. What did they find? The piece of the skull, small piece of the skull. Looking at that, they are saying, "Oh, this is the between, a link, between man and ape, this must be." But later, it is proven to be wrong. Deception, wrong. Each case, it's like that. You see the ape woman, all lies, you see? That later it was found, it is only plaster of Paris. Made out of plaster of Paris and posted there, and it was kept and venerated in the museum also. Hundreds of people went to see that thing. Later, it was quietly they hide it, because it is proven to be wrong, false. They know headline, you see? Headline will not come. Oh, missing link not found, it is not there. Missing link found only is there. That is the condition, that is the nature of the world. They are lying. Professors are lying. Very sad. Because of their desire to run away from God. Who is the first man who departed from the presence of God? Yes? Cain. From that day, we are doing that same thing. Of course, Adam is the first, very first man. He hid himself, right? We are at the bottom. Keep hiding. And then Cain, his son, ran away from the presence of the God. They are doing the same thing today. So it's a big lie. So please, it's how good that now today, there are good scientists who are able to refute these kind of claims and stand for the truth. There was a time that everybody believed in the light, no longer. That time is over. So the truth is coming out. So that is why we should know. So whatever God has said, you cannot cross the boundary, "after his kind", it is there like that only. No, that's not my point here. Can you see verse 12? Tree yielding fruit. Fruit mentioned, now fruit bearing. Trees, fruit came into focus now. Fruit bearing. First tree is salvation. Second day separation. Third day, fruit bearing. That's what, fruit bearing. That's what we are, right? "You have not chosen me, but I have chosen you and ordained you, that you may go and bring forth fruit, and that your fruit may remain." There you are. So we have been called now to bear fruit. Our life should show forth. The fruit is actually, to begin with, it's not our ministry, it's not our service. Fruit bearing is not how we are able to convert others to Christ. It is the fruit is mostly the characteristic, fruit of character, the characteristics of the Lord Jesus Christ. That is the fruit. You will know them by God. So the Lord Jesus has chosen us, that we may go and bring forth fruit. So we need to have, that verse is in John chapter 15, verse 6, right? That verse that we talked about?
If a man abides not in me...
15, 16, sorry.
You did not tell me, but I told you...
Yes, 15, 16.
You did not tell me, but I told you that wanted you that you should go and bear fruit, and that your food should abide, so that whatever you ask, the Father in my name, he may give it to you.
So fruit bearing, either next step, third day. We are all supposed to be like that. What are these fruits? Please read Philippians chapter 1, verse 11.
Being filled with the fruits of righteousness, which are by Jesus Christ...
Fruit, fruit of righteousness. Fruits of righteousness, there you are. That is the meaning of fruit. Our lives become righteous. Fruits of righteousness. That is the meaning of fruit bearing. Then you also have Galatians 5:22, very, very well got.
The fruit of spirit is love, joy, peace, warm suffering, gentleness, goodness, faith, meekness, temperance.
We already got the verse you are reading. 5:22, because we all know, where do you find the fruit of the spirit? Tell me, where do you find fruit of the spirit? Here, Galatians 5:22. But where shouldn't be found actually? Genesee. In our life, in our life, that's the problem. We all know, Sunday school students know. Fruit of the spirit, immediately, Galatians 5:22 only. It's not in my life. What is the first one? We'll go through the list. Fruit of the spirit is?
Love.
Yeah, can you see there, fruit, not fruits. Fruit of the spirit is. Is love, okay. Okay, I have love. Right, we'll come now, next one?
Joy.
Oh, joy also to come next step, right? We are joy, yes, there?
Peace.
Peace, happy. Next one.
Long sufferings.
Now, after the fruit of the spirit is now difficult. Long suffering means? What is the next one?
Gentleness.
Gentleness is not there at all. He is gentle, wives here, please tell whether your husband is gentle? That's our problem. This is my problem. The spirit of the Lord should produce the fruit. This is the transformed light. Love, joy, peace, very, very popular. After that, things become very difficult. Yes, gentleness. I don't know whether you, I should have given this illustration. Bull in the china shop. The bull in the china shop. You know, china shop is, it's an English kind of expression. China is plates and teacups and beautiful things made with, you know?
Posole.
Posole, that's right. China shop. So the china shop is there, beautiful display, all the glass items and porcelain items are there. What if a bull gets in China? Bull doesn't know, he will come from the front door, he will go, and one thing, one will fall. He will be looking, beautiful, she is going farther, going farther. The bull in the china shop, it does not stop. Everything is broken. See, we are like that. Relationships are broken by one word. And we don't realize it. Dear brothers and sisters, where is this gentleness in our lives? These are things we must carefully see and try to have them in our lives. Not to act like a bull in a china shop, that's what they say. You see, we have to be careful. The lives have to be handled carefully. Heart can be broken by one word, you see? So long suffering is patience, patience. And then what else you find?
Goodness.
Goodness, there? Faith.
Meekness.
Meekness.
Temperance.
Temperance is another difficulty. Knowing the limit. Knowing the limit is very difficult. Now husbands can speak now about this. What about knowing the limit of your wife? If the wife, will the wife stop at the right time speaking? She should stop. Tell me, I'm not contradicting anybody. The gentle thing I'm talking about. This is my own experience, you see? Yes. So there has to be, we must know the limit. In everything that we do, these are qualities of the Spirit of God. Spirit of God will bring into our life. We cannot live like any other people in the world. We have to think about the important things of life. What are the fruits? Fruits of righteousness. Secondly, fruit of the spirit. Then we also have fruit of holiness, right? Which are by Jesus Christ. Fruits of holiness, which are by Jesus Christ. Romans 6:22. Romans 6:22.
But now being made free from sin and become servants to God, we have your fruits unto holiness.
Fruits unto holiness. This is what God wants us to have in our life. That is the third day of creation, fruit bearing. Then fruit of our lips, can you remember? Yes, Hebrews 13:15. Hebrews 13:15.
By him therefore that us offer the sacrifice of praise to God continually, that is the fruit of our lips, giving thanks with his name.
That is offering praises to God, thanks giving unto God. This is our way of bearing fruit. Number two would be the fruit of our ministry. First one, fruit of character. Second, fruit of our ministry. So we must give that first praise to the fruit of character. So let us go to fourth day now, we have to finish in a little while. Go to the fourth day please. We have verse 15, Genesis chapter 1. Let them be for lights.
In the firmament of heaven, they give light upon the earth, and it was so.
Yes.
And God made two great lights, a greater light to rule the day, and lesser light to rule the night. He made the stars also. And God said that in the firmament of heaven, to give light upon the earth.
Yes. So there we have the sun and the moon. You must see that the word creation is not there. Let there be lights in the firmament of the heaven to divide the day from the night. You see that in the book of Genesis, chapter 133 times, you find that word bara, which is creation out of nothing. The rest of the time is God made. That is different. Making it to appear, that's the being, not creation. Now, chapter 1, verse 1, God created out of nothing. Esne hero, out of nothing. That is bara, special word. But other things, not like that. They are already there, God will arrange, rearrange them, keep in the proper place. That kind of a thing. Sun and the moon is like that. So here we have sun and the moon ruling over the day and the night. This is a beautiful description about the Lord Jesus and the church. Now there are two lights described there, right? Greater light than the lesser light. Now lesser light actually does not have light in itself. It is reflected light only. Sun is the source of light. Moon doesn't have light. It has only reflected light, reflecting from the sun. But we are seeing sun, moon, very beautiful, in the light. So, so, right? It is exactly the same today. This is a reminder, fourth day is a reminder of the relationship between the Lord and the church. That is the principle that is brought into that, like, you know, it's a mystery. It is a spiritual meaning there, that's a spiritual meaning. I'm not teaching doctrines here, but just a spiritual thought. So sun and the moon. What time are we now? Are we living in the daytime or are we in the night now? We are in the night. So we are in the night. In the night, what should we see? The moon. What is the moon? So, and from where do we get our light? The Lord Jesus. He is called the son of righteousness. Malachi chapter 41 knows too. Yes, the son of righteousness shall rise with healings in his wings. Son of righteousness. So let us remember that we are the representation of the Lord Jesus. That is upon his earth, that is the reminder on the fourth day. So we must all be aware of that and live accordingly. So that is the fourth day, the mystery of the Lord Jesus and the church. Oh, how much that we can learn, right? About the relationship between the church and the Lord Jesus. Lord Jesus loved the church. Lord Jesus bought, purchased the church. Lord Jesus is adorning the church. The Lord Jesus is sanctifying the church. Finally, the Lord Jesus is going to glorify the church. Then finally, the Lord Jesus is going to marry the church. So it's a great mystery. And we are the church. So what God has planned is hidden in the book of Genesis, chapter 1. So fourth day is the Lord Jesus and the church. Let us go to the fifth day.
And God said, "Let the waters bring forth abundantly..."
Which verse is this, now please?
20.
20? Verse 20 now, please.
And God said, "Let the waters bring forth abundantly the moving creature that hath life, and thou that be flieth on earth in open firmament of heaven."
Yeah, verse 21 also.
And God created great whales, and every living creature that moved toward which the waters brought forth abundantly after their kind, and every being fowl after his kind; and God saw that it was good.
What is the principle that is hidden there? We have on the fifth day, God creating two kinds of, in the animal kingdom. What are the two kinds?
In the water and in the...
In the water and in the...
Right.
What does that teach us? Fish and the birds, right? They are vehicles actually. They speak to us of overcoming life. Isn't that right? The fish is able to swim against the current. Tiny fish, tiny fish, have you seen swimming against the current? Yes, we can't fish swim like that. It's a marvelous thing. That tiny little fish is, the river is flowing this way. The fish is swimming the other way. So that speaks to us of the overcoming life. Look at the birds. What a marvelous thing it is. The bird is able to lift its weight and fly. Fly against the gravitational pull. You see? There is gravitational pull. If we jump, we will hit, you come down again, right? We can't do anything, but the bird is able to do it. The bird is able to fly on its own. And the earth is pulling the bird down, but it won't stop. It will fly high. The exact picture of overcoming life. Dear brothers and sisters, please think about this. How beautifully God has arranged everything in the days of creation, one after the other. So we are called to lead an overcoming life. Swim against the current. Rise against the gravitational pull. This world, this earth is pulling us down. You be here, earthbound, earthbound. We have to rise above that. We have to rise above that and live a victorious life. Victorious life. Oh, what a, what a subject to have, victorious life. That is what we need. That is the norm for the believer. There are three hell dogs. They are called hell dogs. No man can escape those hell dogs. The devil, flesh, and the world. If you escape one dog, the second dog will get you. If you escape the second dog, the third dog will get you. That's the condition in the world. But only the believer, who can live above these things, all the violence of the wicked one, and the attractions of the world, and also the pulling of the natural man, the old man or the flesh, sinful nature, that's what it is. It's possible. It's possible for us. Because God has now given us that ability. Please let me conclude at holy convocation. At reading, we had won. Our theme was the newness of life. Romans 6:4. Oh, it was a wonderful time of revelation of the word of God. We walk in newness of life. Walking in newness of life is our responsibility, but also it is our privilege. How can we walk in the newness of life? God has done what is necessary. God has done what is necessary for us to do that. He has given us the capacity to do that. We have been planted together in the likeness of his death. We have been planted together in the likeness of his resurrection. So who has done that? God has done that. That is Romans 6:5. So we are thinking that nothing has happened, we are still the same people. We are trying to lead a holy life. We are trying to lead a new, new life, which is not possible. We must believe what God has accomplished through the Lord Jesus Christ. What has he done? He has planted us together with the depth of the Lord Jesus. Joined us together and then joined us together in the resurrection of the Lord Jesus. Already accomplished, completed, finished, past tense. Now we must believe it. That's what we. Every day we must believe it and say, Lord, you have done it. No, I don't have to be. Be under these things. The hell dogs can come after me, but I will overcome. So overcoming life is the next beautiful lesson secret that is taught there. In the book of Genesis, on the fifth day. The sea life of fish in the sea and also the birds of the air. Then the sixth day.
And God said, pray today. And God said, let the earth bring forth the living creature after his coming. Cattle and creeping thing and beast of the earth after his coming, and it was so. God made the beast of earth after his coming and cat after their coming. And everything that creeped upon the earth after his coming, and God saw that it was good. And God said, let us make man in our image after our likeness. And let them have dominion over fish.
I must stop there. Please brother, twenty-six again, first sentence.
And God said, let us make man in our image and our likeness.
Our likeness, there you are. That is the next one. Sixth day speaks to us, God saying, let us make man in our own image. Just adding a melon, can you make, can you connect with the New Testament? What is that? You make, make the connection, God's purpose. What is God doing today? What is God doing today?
Make knowledge of man.
Yeah, and? Just try to give some, some. There you are. Conforming into the image of?
Christ.
Because it's God says, let us make man in our own image. Image was made by sin. And now God is doing the same thing again through the Lord Jesus Christ. That we have been predestinated to be conformed to the image of his son. Romans 8:29, please, Romans 8:29.
For those whom he foreknew, he also predestinated to be conformed to the image of his son. In order that he might be the firstborn among many brothers.
Now we have some, as I told in the beginning, problems and questions about predestination. The word predestination is always connected with the image of the son of God. Look at everywhere in the Bible. It is not about salvation. It is about being conformed to the image of son. Ephesians 1:4, 1:5 also like that, you see.
Having predestinated us unto the adoption of children by Jesus Christ himself.
Yeah, adoption of children is that public proclamation of Sanship. Yes, that is not salvation. We are not adopted into the family of God. We are born into the family of God. But adoption is a public proclamation of the Sanship of God. Early a deep thought, but it is happening. That's what we are being ready for, dear brothers and sisters. God is doing, God is working in us. He wants to do something great, what is that? We have been predest, we have been predestinated to be conformed to the image of his son. Image, the spiritual character of the son of God. Not the likeness of the face and the hairstyle. No, it is the image of his character. Full of grace and truth. So that is what God is doing. So sixth day is a reminder to us about God's great purpose. After we were born again. We are not taken to heaven immediately. You see, we are still here. Why is that? Yes, work is going on, work is going on. We say, no, no, I don't want to, I can't be transformed. But till God says, you wait, you have to be transformed, you see? We want to have our own nature, our own image. The character has to be changed, transformation. Leading big San San to glory, that is the purpose. God gave his son to this world so that he could lead many San San to?
Glory.
That's what it is. Not babies, sons and daughters. The word there is actually the mature people, the grown up sons and daughters. So whatever our age would be, we can be a person who is spiritually grown up person. So for that, there are spiritual exercises that we have to go through. So the wonderful plan of God is obvious in Genesis, chapter one. That is the final thing. In the world people don't like when the neighbor's child also tried to become like your own child. You see, in our villages, I think you know about this. Some of you have, might have come from villages, I'm from a village in Mont Village. You see, that the village headman has a son. He is the son of the whole village. No one else can be like him. Oh yes, he's going to school every day in the pool of God, you know? Others have to go by walking only. So. If any other lesser people's child, son is also trying to do that, village headman will be very angry. Hey, you can't be like that, my son is the one, you can't follow him, you see? So even if you dress up like him, they are very angry. Those days, ancient days, it was like that, you see? But God is not like that. God is saying, my son, the holy son of God, eternal son of God, I want the human beings to like him. That is the thing. God's grace is like that. That is why in Romans, chapter eight, verse 29 and 30 are considered to be the five pleasures of God. Fivefold grace of God. You see, what are the fivefold pleasures of God there?
For we did foreknow.
Foreknow, foreknowledge of God.
He also did predestination.
Predestination of God.
To be conformed into the image of son.
Yes.
And whom he predestined, he also called.
Calling of God.
Whom he called, he also justified.
Justification of God.
Whom he justified, then he also glorified.
Glorification of God. Five things are there. All these five things are, these are great topics to discuss. They all happened because of the grace of God. That is why in the Bible usually you have heard, you know, that, that number five stands for grace. Why is that? It is this verse, Romans 8:29 and 30. There are five things that we have nothing to do with, we can't do it by ourselves. Yes, foreknowledge of God. Predestination of God. Calling of God. Justification of God. Glorification of God, all done by God. Wonderful. So God has a great plan. Eternal plan, we are just human beings, foolish. We must say, Lord, how wonderful is your grace? Grace will accomplish. So number six, the sixth day speaks to us of that. Image of the Lord Jesus Christ in us, right? We are not going to the seventh day, but we have finished with the sixth day only. Number seven also is there. Look at verse twenty-six, please. And the, uh, second, and let them have from that point.
And let them have dominion over the fish of the sea, over the fowl of the air, over the cattle, over all earth and over every creeping thing that creeped upon the earth.
Please mark the word dominion. Let them have?
Dominion.
Verse twenty-eight, please.
And God blessed them, and God said unto them, be fruitful and multiply, and replenish the earth and subdue it. And have dominion over the fish of the sea.
Subdue it, subdue it. And then have dominion, those are the two strong words there in that verse. Subdue the earth. Have dominion over, what does that remind you of? Please. Yes, Thauridi? If it will happen in the future, please tell me. Yes, reigning with Christ, reigning with Christ, that is the message hidden there. Yes, have dominion. Subdue the earth. So the message is there, what God is doing today is hidden in chapter one itself. We will reign with the Lord Jesus Christ. Wonderful things are spoken about us. Here we will be given an iron rod also. You see, iron rod, you, what will, what will you do with iron rod? It, yes, break the earthen vessels. That is recorded in the Bible. The millennial reign, have you studied the millennial reign, brothers and sisters? This is again another beautiful subject. The millennial reign, what it will look like? The believers reigning with Christ. They are not subjects of the kingdom. They are reigning with Christ. These are true, these are going to happen. Who will be the king? The Lord Jesus, reigning, from where? Please tell me, where?
Jerusalem.
From Jerusalem, from Mount Zion. Physically, he, it's, it's a political kingdom. He's not a spiritual kingdom. He will be reigning there for thousand years. Thousand years is mentioned in Revelation, chapter twenty-one to seven. Six times mentioned, thousand years, thousand years, thousand years, six times mentioned. That means it is thousand years. Going to be thousand. We can't make a mistake about it. The Lord Jesus is with us. So subdue the earth, have dominion over the, so that is the purpose of God. Finally, he wants to bring us to the throne. To be with him, to reign with him, with the Lord Jesus Christ. So dear brothers and sisters, this is what God has planned for you and for me. And his plan is now clearly mentioned. His plan is there in the book of Genesis, chapter one. So regarding that final, final thought, reigning upon the earth. Read Revelation, chapter two, please. Revelation, chapter two, finally, Revelation, chapter two. Twenty-six and twenty-seven.
And he that overcomeeth, and he that fighteth, wills unto them. To him will I give power over the nations, and he shall rule them with a rod of iron. As the vessels of a potter shall they be broken to shivers, even as I received of my father.
Oh, that's difficult, right? We can't even think of it, imagine. unthinkable. Power over nations. Even over great Britain. Yes, over nations. To him that overcomeeth. He shall rule them with a rod of iron. So this is, this is what God is going to do. So I think I would end there. God has a plan. His plan is already set. Even hidden in the book of Genesis, chapter one. Now we can understand it. Because we are in the New Testament, we are saved, we are given the Spirit of God. And now we can dig out that purpose of God even from chapter one. Throughout the Bible, you find these kind of signs, that what God has planned for his people. That's what it is. So we must respond now. We must respond, starting with salvation. Ending with reigning in Christ. What are the seven things, please now, shall we go through them? Salvation. Semelation. Fruit bearing, yes. Then the relationship between the Lord and the church. Overcoming life. Yes, being transformed to his image. Reigning in Christ, yes. Thank you very much, I'm very happy because I'm only thinking I won't be able to repeat that message again because you remember so well. You remember so well, that's very good. We are trained, trained well to remember, very well, very good. So let us, can you remember them and thank the Lord for his goodness. Shall we pray?